I'd like to call this regular board meeting session. Roll call.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Mr. Phellis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Treasurer, Mr. Weber, Superintendent, Mr. Tucker, Board President, Mr. Damachia, esteemed board members. Tonight we have a fifth grade student from Garfield Elementary School who will lead a pledge of allegiance. Bizarro Olataya is a student at Garfield Elementary School. After the pledge, she will speak on the life of a student at Garfield. Mrs. Michelle Spots-Hayes, president of Garfield, is here tonight to support her student and also appear to her here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and with the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My speech is about a life that a student, a life of a student at Garfield Elementary. As I was growing up, I was very shy, and when I got to Garfield, it was very hard for me to make new friends. So when I saw kids coming to me and asking me to come play or join them, that really made me open up and express myself more. The teachers were, and still are, very nice to me, and even helped me with my homework when needed and difficult situations that even my family couldn't help me with, which was very thoughtful. Over the years, I've had three principals. Yeah, I know, they have very different personalities, but my favorite one is guess who? Mrs. Spots. She is one of the nicest principals I've ever met, and she even knows how to calm us down when needed. I also love the way the school is against bullying, because that's a real problem in other schools. After, at my after-school program, we make bully-free posters, which I really love. My favorite itinerary in a Garfield is library, because it is very quiet, and I love reading my books, so I can find out more information and keep my grades up. Also, the librarian, Mrs. Smith, is very nice to me, and I like that. But my favorite part of the whole entire school is everything, because I love everything there. Without Garfield, I don't think I would be the person I am today, a straight-A student with a 4.0 GPA. I'm really thankful for all the things that the Garfield staff has helped me accomplish. I remember as I was writing this, I thought I wouldn't, it thought it would be hard. I thought I wasn't going to finish in time. Then I stopped to think, and I said, wait, what am I doing? Garfield is an awesome school and has many great things to write about. I am now in the fifth grade, studying hard and taking the part test. Now that my teachers have helped me, the test is actually not as bad as I thought. I have always remembered the little thing my first grade teacher, Mrs. Gault, used to say, "You're not a failure because you got it wrong, you are a success because you tried." And now that's what I am today.
Thank you. I'd like to present you with a certificate. And also, Kenner Monk, please stand.
I'd like to thank you for choosing the Ray City Schools and presenting us with a wonderful student. We'd also like to have a picture with you as also with the board members. Next, we'd like to present our robotics team. They've done a phenomenal job this year. I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them present and tell you their accomplishments so far.
Okay, well, this is a phenomenal team, and I have to put a big thank you out to the parents for supporting these children, because without you, they wouldn't be here today. But our robotics team, this is the first year that they've been created, and they did a phenomenal job. They actually took, this, this team took these fine little robots over there to state and became very ambitious with it, let's just say. Ms. Hanson, is there, let's see, leader, coach, what do you want to call her? Because she's phenomenal, right, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. Without her, although I think they taught her some things along the way, as well as me, but just a phenomenal group of kids. And being that they're eighth graders, they're gonna stay another year with me at Longfellow? Come on, yeah! No, they're, they're moving up to bigger and better things, and, and I applaud each and every one of you for the fabulous job that you do every day at Longfellow. They're all part of my news crew as well, so, well, some of them are, and yeah, that's okay. But a great group of kids. Dad, why don't you come up and, and share their journey? Because they were fabulous.
Whenever I do anything, I do it for my students and with my students, so my students are part of, are doing the presentation. I don't do the presentation, but they do it. So I'm very proud of them. They are, they have, it's been a wonderful, amazing journey that we've had this year, so I'd like them all to come up, and we have a video we put together, and we'll explain it to you about what is Vex Robotics and what we accomplished this year. Let's go.
Can you see the girl power?
Where do you want us to stand for us to be, so that you can see the video, but they can talk? Do you want them bowed in there? Where you want them to see it? So I get, you guys, I guess, can go up right in there. You want to come over in here? I come over in here. Mine's to put the robot down there. Get the other robot. Molly, go get the other robot. Oh, never mind. All right. Move it over a little bit this way. Okay? We all can be seen. All right. Good, 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 good. Okay, Molly is the, the person. Molly Codman will be the first one to talk. Actually, what I'd like you each to do is introduce yourselves and say what your position was on the team, please.
I'm Molly Codman, and on the team, I was on the scout team, and I was also on the building team.
I'm Liam Codman, and I was on the drive team, and I was also a coach.
I'm Caitlin Raimy-Rollin, and I did a little bit of building, a little bit of sponsors, a little bit of scouting, too.
I'm Andre Claudio, and I did sponsors and video editing.
I'm Maya Papas. I work on documentation and scouting.
I'm Eliana Sinchan. I work on documentation as well. I'm a scouter and I present.
I'm Riley Figueroa, and I did a little bit of building, and I'm on both drive teams and helped work out strategy.
I am Tyler Gargis. I was a builder and driver.
All right. Molly, hit it while I get to set up.
Okay, so I'm Molly, and I'm part of the long, the robotics team at Longfellow Middle School, and I'm here to tell you about, a little about what we do at robotics. And if you were wondering what Vex Robotics is, here's a little video.
What is Vex Robotics?
What is it all about? Well, it's about problem solving, team building, engineering, programming, developing abilities to think, design, think out of blocks. Oh, that is so cool, but is there any seventh grader on it? No, not currently. There's no seventh graders on it right now, but it's not too late, because at the end of the third grading period, we're gonna be recruiting seventh graders and teaching them about Vex Robotics.
Okay, we're sort of the Vex Robotics team.
What we're here to talk about today is what we do during competitions.
When we first go to the competition, we do something called inspection.
See, in inspection, we have an official look at our robot to clear us for competition.
And then we go on to something called skills competition. There are two parts to skill competition, autonomous and driver control.
In the first portion of skills competition, which is autonomous, we have to program our robot to run by itself for 60 seconds.
This was our winning competition.
Driver control. To see if we can score the most points.
Then the next part of the competition is called qualifying matches.
In the qualifying match, we compete against other teams to get the rankings, so we can choose the alliance.
Alliance, alliance choosing is very important. It could make or break going states.
See, when you choose your alliance, you use the rankings from the qualifying match, and then you use your alliance, and you compete against other alliances until there is only one team left, and then that team wins.
And then they go to states. And from states, after you compete, you can go to worlds, and there will be teams that are there from all around the world that compete.
Hi, everybody. My name is Leah.
Hi, Leah.
I am programming for the robot. Today, I am adjusting the autonomous code and the competition template for a 60-second autonomous code in order, in order to win a competition, in order to go to states.
Okay, what is it that you normally do besides autonomous?
I program user control, which is when we use a controller to control the robot, in order to score a competition.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellie.
Hi, Maya.
Hi. Hey, Emily, what is it that you normally do here?
I'm in charge of the engineering notebook. This is a whole detailed explanation on everything that we do to the robot and all of our programming goes.
Oh, that's cool. And you, Maya? I know that there is a binder, is that what you work on?
Uh, yes, I work on this binder, and it contains all of our documentation about what we do at meetings and who attended those meetings. And that's basically it, and I help Ellie with documentation.
Hello, my name is Tyler Gargis.
Hi, Tyler, what is it that you normally do?
Uh, I help design the lift, and now I'm wearing the robot to work.
Okay, I see there's two robots there, why is that?
In order for modifications, this is our original, we have the secondary one for modifications.
Hmm, so one to practice with and one to take to competition? All right, thank you, Tyler. Hi, I'm Andre, and I'm part of the public relations team and the video editing team. What I do is I call people to let them know about our team and get all the sponsor money that we need, so we're able to travel and stay in the hotels. Also, I work on the videos when I go to the competitions, take picture, come back, and create this video, like the one you're seeing today.
Riley will explain.
Right now, the robot is competing the 60-second autonomous, which stacks a Skyrise. Well, this one, this one's definitely two, but why they just expect the autonomous? It does stack three. And then right now, this is, they start off the match with a 15-second autonomous. So for a 15-second autonomous, we stack a Skyrise, getting a total of five points, which is really good for autonomous.
The other team that time only got two.
Now we are going into the minute and 45 second driver control rounds, where we try to score as many points as possible. As you see, we're working with another robot, which is our alliance, and up until that day, we never met before. We talked to them before the match to work out strategy and what we're gonna do.
Guess who's the cheerleader? Who'd like to explain about the summer camp?
Um, this is our summer camp on which we learned our programming, and we build the robot that you see in front of there, which is called a Clawbot. It was a three-day program, and this is where we learned the, the whole entire program as itself, and we were introduced to programming, building, and where we got our basis for everything.
Yes, we did compete in that very cold weather, this snowstorm, that we had no school, but we were competing. Got to have a little fun. Working out strategies in the hotel the night before, trying to figure out what we needed to do. This here is the team that brought home our excellence. They were our interviewing team, very proud of them. They were interviewed, and we got our first trophy, which qualified us for states. This is the whole team, and I'm very, very proud of them, and what the work they do in even video production. We have our robot with us today, but we ended up qualifying. We ended up qualifying to states, so we got the first trophy, and that was the excellence award. To get the excellence award, what they had to do is they had to, first off, the two documentation books that we had had to be looked over amongst all of the people in competition. So we, depending on the, the competition we went to, we had 77 teams, which we were in the final running there, and this one that we qualified that, there was 35 teams. And so once they narrow it down to the small amount, they, they call them in for an interview. And my interview team...
Step forward.
Step forward. Would then go in front of the, the judges, tell them your experiences, the interviewing team.
Nerve-wracking. They, yeah, they, they ask you questions about your robot, how you're doing in the qualification rounds, and the basis of what's in your documentation books, and it's kind of scary going up there in front of two or three judges.
Well, for every competition that we've been, we've been interviewed every competition that we've gone to, which is really, really a good thing, and so the judges, they each have their own opinions on the engineering notebook and the documentation, so it's amazing for three interviews from different judges' point of views.
Well, to be fair, the judges of the second competition we went to weren't all that bad. They were definitely the most cheery. I mean, you go through straight face to happily talking to you.
Nerve-wracking. All right, so then, once we, at that competition, that was at Belle Fontaine that we were there, and we were, we were told that we received, we were ready to go home, because we really didn't have the best competition day, as far as out on the competition field, but we felt good about what we had to put together. And with that, they came back, and we, it was cold day, we said, oh, we gotta get going, gotta go home, and they said, ah, why don't you stay a little bit longer? So we stayed, and we were awarded the excellence award over all of them at the middle school. And so with that award, that qualified us to state. So then we went to state, and we zeroed in on our programming skills, because that's where we really knew that we could really make a difference. So...
So, the, there's, there's a skills competition, and they're 60 seconds long, and there's driver skills and programming skills. And the driver skills, you drive your robot and see how many points you get to score. And in the programming skills, you write an autonomous code, and then that goes and try and score points in that. And so we, we knew that we were pretty strong in programming, so we decided to go in that. And the top 30 teams in the world actually get an instant spot in the world competition if you were a top 30. And so then we tried that, and we were able to score 16 points on our first attempt at the state competition, and that put us somewhere near the 100th spot in the world, that was in top 30. But we did take first, though.
First for middle school and state.
At the competition, and we are now 22nd in the world.
This is our trophy there. They were crowned the champion of programming skills for middle school, Ohio. And so that's a pretty cool op, cool option here, a great opportunity for us to be crowned this for our first year. Oh, my goodness.
Number four out of high school and both middle school.
We presently rank 106 overall in the whole world, and we have, if, if you narrow it down to just middle schools in the world, we're 22nd. So that just shows you the time, the energy that these students put in. We were there late nights, working over and over, because the drive was there that we wanted to prove that we could do this our first year, and so they did. And so I'm very proud. We were hoping we'd make it to worlds. We're very, we were close, we were like that close, because the team that did get to go from the, from the state competition had 19, and we had 16. So that's how close we were, and the, and the next team under, under the 19 was 16 also. So there was just one other team ahead of us, and so, and that was a high school team. So I'm really proud of them. They'd like to demonstrate their robot to you. Explain the robot. Tyler, you explain the robot.
Okay.
Camera's behind you there, so you gotta get on the other side. You know that.
So our original base design, we started off with two prototypes. We have these 45-degree angle wheels, and then we have the other base with the wheels centered on every side. We ended up going with it, with the design, because it helped with claw placement, where we could fit it in between two wheels instead of having to have it raised between or above a wheel, and it allowed for omnidirectional movement, if you don't mind. And as for the claw, this took a good three weeks of research to find a claw like this. And it did take some modifications from the plans.
Lift.
From lift, yeah, to get this to her, because size-wise, it wouldn't have fit on the robot originally.
We're within an 18 by 18-inch square area we have to start out with. Our robot must fit in that at the beginning of the competition.
And the design I saw was 19 inches by itself.
What type of lift is this?
This is a waterfall lift, because of the way it must be chained. It goes, sorry, please. The chain runs in a waterfall direction as it goes up through the robot. And we did experience some chain breakings, but we have found the problem and fixed it. My lift was picked?
Oh, the lift was picked, because it was very stable. And the other lifts, they could get higher, but they weren't as stable at these high heights, and this lift was very stable and strong. You can see it doesn't weigh that much, and it was very stable for our program for the autonomous. That way we wouldn't be dealing with those problems. And then this is a Skyrise. You have to stack these, these are worth four points. You remove them from the loader, and you put them in this base. Obviously, we put these, basically, we put them here. And you stack them, and that would be eight points, because it's two. And then also, you can grab locks. You can also stack these on the Skyrise. And that's another four points. So, and, and four points is actually a lot, because there's not very many ways to score points, and the other ways are, it's very...
The highest point you scored, then you score.
Yeah, so we're able to, it's 16 to 20 points, adjusted for the Skyris.
What I like about the competition and us starting this, as Riley mentioned, is that it, we're meeting teams all over Ohio, and we are actually working with teams all over Ohio. They, they are, they are actually alliances. They, they actually go to that competition, and when they arrive there, they have no clue who they're gonna be working with, and they have to pair up with them, learn their strategy plus our, our strategies, and figure out what's the best to be successful at the competition. And with that, I don't know too many other competitions where you're actually pairing up with alliances with people all over Ohio, and then actually, if we went to worlds, we would be working with people with China, Australia, all over the world attend this competition, and we were that close. And so I'm very proud of them, of our accomplishments and what they've done. This is a phenomenal, not everyone's here with us tonight, because this is a phenomenal team, and I'm very proud of them. Does anybody have any questions for us? Yes, Mr. Smith?
How do you see this helping you when you get out of high school or go to college?
Well, like she said, sorry, like she said, we meet new teams, we've never met before, and we work with them, so that really helps us with communication and teamwork, because our alliance, I've never met any of them before. I just met them, and we talk to them, so the communication should really help us in college, future career, and also, working with such a big team, communication's really important.
The other, another way it can help us when we get out of high school is if anybody is planning on going into engineering jobs, we already have that experience under our belts. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you for letting us present to you. Sure, I forgot to mention to thank Carol for the wonderful article. We were on the front page of the paper on Sunday, too, so, nice stuff. One of the questions he just asked was this made from a kit. The original kit starts out like this. This is, it's not a kit, but it's parts that they give you, and they give you a rough idea. That's where we started, that was the summer. They designed, and every year the competition changes, so we have no idea until April what it will be. And in April, then we'll learn, and we'll work over the summer and start fresh, completely fresh. I also want to thank the parents, because, oh my gosh, these parents have been wonderful. They have been with us, they come in in the evenings. We, we, we actually eat supper on Tuesdays, and we work until 7:30, 8 o'clock, and the parents come in and visit with us, and so we've become a family. I call it my family.
Thank you. Let's give students and the parents a round of applause. Excellent job. Thank you. Great work.
First hearing in the public.
Looking around, I don't.
I don't think there's any public left.
Any motion to approve or amend the signed minutes?
So move.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Any old business?
No old business.
Report and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are four items on the docket for the treasurer's section today. First one is the January 2015 financial reports. The ending cash balance and general fund at the end of January was $5,558,493. Item 8.02 is the purchase orders requiring board approval. Item 8.03, every of the board goes to the Capitol Conference in November, this past November, and the budget for those expenses was $5,500 and the actual expenses came in at $2,792.52. And last item is 8.04 is a waiver regarding attorney Kenneth Stumphauser. Also a couple more items on here, or one more, I should say, just one more. We do have the, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, the levy, the renewal levy is expiring a calendar year 2016. So we have, we certainly have time, but it expires also because the levies are on a calendar year basis, not fiscal year. And that renewal levy is expiring next year. We can be on the board, we can be on the ballot this coming November at the earliest, even though it expires in 2016, and three more times in 2016. So if we're going to be on in November 2015, we have to have those decisions made in about three months. But it's got, just thinking about those issues, not rushing anybody, just put it out there for us just to ponder. Okay? So I recommend for approval items 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, and 8.04.
Motion to approve items 801 through 8.04.
Support motion.
Discussion.
Just wanted to point out for the public's benefit and the board's, that Mr. Tucker is paying his own attorney. It's not that the board would be paying that. It's just so there is no conflict of interest because Mr. Stumphauser's law firm he works for, I believe Tony has done other work for us.
Well, potentially could.
Yeah, accordingly. And we just don't want to make sure that there's clear, there's no conflict of interest. That's all it is. The board is not paying Mr. Tucker's services for his services from the attorney.
Thank you. The only thing I have is you bring up the renewal levy. Do you have a recommendation as to what would be in the best interests?
I don't as of tonight.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay, items 8.01 through 8.04. Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Report and recommendations of the superintendent.
I put out a letter today to the staff at the end of the day. We have a lot of good things going on in the district. And the robotics team, which you just saw, the Cleveland magazine, which just came out in the last couple of days in the April issue, they did a story, which is on page 65, called "A Boy's Life." And what they did was with the situation in Cleveland with the 12-year-old boy that was shot, they interviewed a number of students talking about their emotions, dreams, fears, and aspirations of a young generation. They interviewed a number of 12-year-olds across northern Ohio. And right, right on the very first page of the article is one of our seventh graders, General Johnny Wilson, is featured right up front. And it's, it's very interesting to read the insight of seventh graders and 12-year-olds across the, across the northern Ohio, but we are featured there. I cannot pass this up because that Titan basketball team and Coach Rosatana, what they've done is unbelievable. Tomorrow morning between 6:00 AM and 6:30 AM, WKYC Channel 3 is going to have a special, a little special segment on our football team. Tournament season begins this Saturday.
Basketball.
And it's been, it's been, we're, we're on our way, so.
You mean my basketball team?
Yes, the basketball team.
Because you said football.
Oh, well, the football team. The art, the article I wrote was, it's just building on the great football season that we had this year also.
I would, I would like to mention that out of, I see, I guess there was 66 games as, you know, as, as a program, and there was a total loss of four. Okay, so when you go.
That's freshman through varsity, right?
Freshman JV, there was only, there was only four losses in the whole program. Okay, so that, that's beyond phenomenal.
Sounds good for the year 16, 17, 17, 18?
Sounds, sounds good for a while.
Well, I think, you know what? I think we're starting to see the benefit of one high school. Where we're drawing from the talent from the entire city. When we, before when we had the three, we had a lot more kids to draw from. But now with shrinking birth rates and there's, I think that's part of it. I really do because there's, we're drawing from everywhere. Academically, which was very, you know, poignant tonight, and, and from athletics.
Hopefully we ride that right into our new high school.
Absolutely. While speaking of the football team, they, they came to Mr. Hawks and I, the coach, and asked about the weight room and could we, could we do some work in there? And we have done that and I've got a lot of thank you notes that came from the team. They're, they're fun to read, but we've really done a, a job with those, with that weight room and, and trying to treat our team to some really first-class facilities. I also want to congratulate the wrestling team. We have five wrestlers and one alternate that are qualified for district tournament. And in, in some of those wrestlers also, because we're always concerned about the academics, one of the, one of the students that is going to district is ranked number one in his class in 11th grade and another one's ranked number four in his class. So this Titans continue to roll on those. I'd also like to make an announcement that you are on a cycle for the, for your preschool, the early childhood, for the state to come in and rate you. Last year they began rating districts and rating preschools. And you've seen around town, you've seen some got one star, some got two stars. Five stars is the best rating that you can get. We just found out this week that our teachers, and Linda Code really led this under the direction of Jane Hawks, but the teachers over at Tony Morrison did a terrific job and we got a five-star rating for our preschool. So our preschools are rated the top that you can in the state. And we are, we, these are just a few of the successes that our staff, teachers, and students are, are moving towards. But those are some big things that are happening right, right now and today. Okay, on, on my agenda, 9.01, approval of a certificated staff retirement date changes. Some of them have talked to STRS and have had to change their date, so ask for approval of those dates as listed. 9.02, approval of administrative staff. These are just a substitute. 9.03, support staff. These are either subs or positions where people have less, left. And Michelle Madera, if you know Michelle, works on a lot of your things there. She will be taking, we completely redesigned the tech department and she is replacing a position which has been expanded from the one Lori Mas held. So she is now the help desk specialist, so when you have issues with your iPad, she's the one to see. Supplemental contracts, these are, these are the ones that are for the year. 9.05, consideration of the salary adjustments as per the LEA contract as they get more education. 9.06, certificated staff appointments. We, the, the school counselor is from somewhat from now to the end of the year because we did have a retirement. Title I math is also, a teacher retired mid-year that we're replacing. The math one is also, and the special ed is also. These are people that have retired that we're replacing mid-year. 9.07, support staff resignations is listed. 9.08, leave of absences is listed. 9.09, administrative staff resignations as listed. These are retirements and I would like to mention one here. She doesn't want me to, but she's been around. We've been teaching together since we were looking a little different. Jane Hawks.
You may have. What's the thing?
Jane, Jane also went to Bowling Green when I went to Bowling Green and I'd been at Larkmore about three or four years when, when we worked together many, many years ago on that. 910, approval of supplemental contracts for the non-certified staff for the track. Spring is coming. And 911, the following miscellaneous items. This is just the, you're setting just the fee schedule for those folks that work those programs for the, for the sports events. So as for approval of matters, 9.01 through 9.11.
Motion to approve items 9.01 through 9.11.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Operation Matters, 10.01, this is a contract with PSI. This is, this has nothing to do with us. This is auxiliary services, where they're flow-through for, for the, the auxiliary services for parochial schools. 10.02, this is a contract, this is part of Gear Up. This is finishing up a program that, that's been going on and this is the end of that. There's also a match on that with, with Cecilia Render, Norton Foundation. And so ask for approval of 10.01 and 10.02.
So move. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
11, approval of Section G of the policy manuals as recommended by the policy committee. 11.02, out-of-state field trips, which you have seen, most of those are routine, which the ones that we do every year. And 11.03, consider approval of a resolution for pushing a new slope, snow pile vehicle. We're having problems with our vehicles. I asked Jeff, well, how old are they? He goes, I think the oldest one's like 88, 89. So I think we got our money's worth out of those and these last two, two winters have really done them in. So I ask for approval of 11.01 to 11.03.
Motion to approve items 11.01 through 11.03.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any new business?
Yes, I, I don't know if this is the proper place on the agenda. I guess because it's not on the agenda, it is. I have questions regarding the organizational chart that has been posted online and sent to the board. You had sent it as an attachment on an email, Mr. Tucker.
Correct.
School board policy clearly states that while the superintendent develops the lines of authority, those have to be displayed on an, on a organizational chart. And that organizational chart must be approved by the board. And the organizational chart that was posted online and was in the email was never presented to the board, so in fact, it is not official. And, and I would be more than happy to consider adding to the agenda tonight a recommended, recommendation from you, Mr. Tucker, as to a revised or a new adopted organizational chart.
Yeah, actually, we, we did revise it in January of this past year, so it was just a month and a half or so ago. I did provide a copy for you. It's, it's very, very similar to the one that's online. In fact, it is exactly what's online. A number of positions are there, but they haven't necessarily been filled. And the only thing I do have reflected on there is one assistant superintendent is on special assignment, and that's Dr. Sturgill, who's serving as the high school principal for this year.
It went online as the Academic Distress Commission joint. Or it did as of the other day.
Correct. And it's still there, but this would be one without that because Board of Education is the governing body.
Correct. We are the elected body and, which is clearly that's who you and Mr. Weber report to. So yes, is this, is that the, is there a way to?
Can we do this tonight?
Yeah.
I think all we need to really do is make a motion to walk this item onto the agenda under new business. So move. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, motion to walk on the organizational chart.
As revised in the one that we're looking at right here.
You might be able to give the press a copy at the end of the meeting.
I know.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
We've revised them every year too. I mean, this is.
But, but.
Have not been approved.
If you look online, we're, our, our policy manual is now completely online.
This is correct.
It does not show any revisions or reviews after 2013 and no actually revisions, I don't think till, goes back to '08 sometime.
Correct. I provided them, but I never, I didn't put them on the agenda. That's right.
Yeah, so.
We need a motion to.
Approve it.
We need a motion to approve the organizational chart as revised in front of us if there are no objections to this organizational chart.
Well, we have to put it on to discuss it, so.
We just didn't.
It is on, so I approve, I'm, I make a motion that the organizational chart presented to the board this evening be approved as it is, it stands.
Second. Discussion. And roll call.
Okay, motion to approve the organizational chart as revised. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
And it'll be on the website first thing tomorrow, but I have copy tonight.
Okay, committee reports and requests from board members?
Just that there has been no, fortunately, or not, any legislation passed by the 131st General Assembly, but they've been busy in Columbus. There's 23 at least that have been introduced that would have some effect on schools. Dale, the one I am most concerned about, and they tried to do this in the 130th General Assembly, is to limit, is to limit any, I guess you could say complaints registered regarding property valuations, limit it to only the auditor and the property owner. And as you know, we have gone to whatever that board is called.
Board revisions.
And, and we have stopped requests to lower property values. I don't know, do you, I know it's, it's over a million dollars, I believe, that we have saved.
Over the last five years, I'll say that's probably true.
And, and to change that and not allow school districts to, to question appraisals and limit it only to, well, you know, part, property owners aren't going to complain that it's too old.
Right.
So, and that would leave everything then on the county auditor's shoulders, I assume. So if you speak to Mr. Ramos or Dale Manning, Senator Manning, I would hope this board's position is, we don't want that. We want to leave it like it is.
Other than that, no, that's it, Mr. Smith.
I have one thing to say about the athletic committee. Superintendent Tucker did the rest, but the one thing I wanted to mention was they, they held a, I would say like a pep rally-type assembly, I believe it was on Thursday. And what was impressive was there were still quite a few adults there to recognize these kids in it. I thought that was a, it was a wonderful tribute. And, and I mean, the fans, the stands were just as full as they are for a game. And if anybody's been to a game this year, if you don't get a seat by, by 5:00, 5:30, you may not get a seat. So we've, we've been to capacity and that's the way it should be and I hope that's the way it is for a long time to come. And I'm really looking forward to, to having that type of capacity in a new high school.
Second hearing of public. We will have to go into an executive session, but our next board meeting will be March 16th at 6:30 right here, same place, same people. We, I need a motion to go into executive session for A, two, employment, four, discipline, seven, compensation, and C, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. So move.
Support motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, for items A, two, four, seven, and C. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Would you anticipate, Mr. President, any action following the meeting?
No, not today.
This has been a production of Loraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.
To purchase a high-quality copy of the program you just viewed, please call Loraine City Schools Television at (282) 8400.